Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Dairy Cooperative School Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 22nd. If you would all please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its government, through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Delatwa is absent this evening, otherwise all other board members are present. First item would be the approval of the minutes. A motion to approve the non-public as well as public for September 8th. Motion by Brenda?
Please do a second.
Yes, sir. And second by Lynn. Any discussion? Corrections? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Obeying.
Michelle, one abstention, otherwise motion passes. All right. Mr. Farley from Pinkerton, your update, please.
So, things are going really well at Pinkerton transitioning into the school year. Fall sports have started now, and auditions for the fall play were held yesterday. There were actually 63 people auditioned, which is a record for the school, even though things were virtual, so that's really good news. There was also a virtual club fair yesterday to get people involved in extracurriculars, even with everything going on. And there's going to be a virtual volunteer fair sometime this month to get people involved with volunteering opportunities as well. And a lot of other virtual events going forward as people are adapting to everything. And we are going forward with PSATs and SATs at a limited capacity as well. And other clubs and extracurriculars are starting up, hopefully around the school right now.
Any questions, Pinkerton? No? All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Glad things are going well for you.
All right. Next up is the considerations for transition between school instructional models by Dr. Connors Gekorian.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. In the reopening schools plan, on page 25, under considerations for transition between school instructional models, I want to point you to a paragraph that states, "A locally or state-recommended closure resulting in a transition to our district's completely remote learning plan could occur at any time. In the situation, local health or state officials may either recommend or order our district schools to shut down for a certain time period as a result of an increased number of COVID-19 cases. Once the district has completed distribution of one-to-one devices, this process of moving to the remote learning plan even for a brief time period will be facilitated." That is not the case right now, just to take a deep breath. However, that being said, I think I always remind you, and I hope that I do anyway, that this plan is very fluid. And with that being stated, what we've done as a leadership team is elaborate upon that paragraph on page 25. The newest detailed document being presented tonight, and this evening, really expands upon our original plan, which was predicated on that paragraph. And the state came out with some guidance, and you'll see that as we progress in this explanation of the considerations for transitioning between instructional models. The state came out with some guidance, which is embedded in this explanation, on September 1st. So I'd just like to run through really a summary of this one page, and it has a few links in it about our process for determining how to move between instructional models. And I will try to be brief, yet thorough. So the newest detailed document expands upon our original plan and involves a process, and we really have tried to be very comprehensive in our process. And the first thing embedded in our process is a link to the COVID-19 overview dashboard, which really is monitored and reviewed daily. The COVID-19 overview dashboard is monitored and reviewed daily by members of our leadership team. It includes the numbers of cases over seven days. It includes state numbers, Rockingham County numbers, and so forth. And it's very, very helpful data. Included in the data that we receive as leadership team members, too, is a breakdown of data that Chuck Hemmian, our emergency leadership, he was the emergency services director for our town, and Chuck gives that breakdown to Jane Samard and I twice a week, and the other members of our task force team. So he's really helpful with that data, and the COVID-19 is looked at every day. Part of the process is members of the pandemic response team converse and convene as our metrics fluctuate. So we look at those metrics from the COVID-19 dashboard, and we look at them and say, are they showing a pattern, trend, and so forth? And that's part of our purpose. And the purpose of what we do is to really monitor the current situation and our potential move to a different instructional model. We've had really, really good luck so far. We are hopeful and optimistic that we will continue in that pattern. Part of the explanation of the first page of what I've written up for you tonight is that healthcare members of our Dairy Community Leader Task Force team frequently consult with myself and will advise members of our leadership team of a potential need to move to a different instructional model. And what I want to stress here is, we will not just base it on, base a decision to move to a different instructional model on data or metrics, but it's really a converging in a collaboration with our district community task force members who are health experts. And it's really important to have that collaboration, that constant collaboration, and that constant communication. It is in that that we really pride ourselves on, as you know, and I continue to stress, and we move our district forward in a positive direction. So what's the purpose in determining the level of COVID-19 school impact? Our school news team leader, Susan Linehan, provides a weekly students attendance COVID-like report to several members of our district leadership team on the final day of each week, or sooner if the situation necessitates. And in that attendance report is broken down by school and an aggregate total of attendance figures by district. So it's not only by district, but it's also by school. And that's really, really helpful to us, again, to see patterns and trends of where we are and then where we've been. Our Director of Human Resources, Kathy Kennedy, also provides a staffing update to members of our district leadership team. So we're looking at all those numbers and metrics in accordance with our state numbers and our county numbers as well. So important to note as we go along in here is that the decision matrix, and you'll see that on the state document that Mr. Minkel will show, for transitioning between methods of instructions, will serve as a guide in making decisions. It's not the final decision outlet. It is just a guide. So our district will maintain the important aspects of flexibility to meet student, staff, and district needs as required. And I'm just waiting for that document to show. In the meantime, I'll continue talking, and hopefully, Mr., there you go. Mr. Minkel? Thank you. So embedded in this document that I'm talking about now is the state guidance. And the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services Bureau of Infectious Control has provided the document that you see, and that was provided, as I stated in the beginning, on September 1st. The purpose of this document is to provide guidance for schools as they consider moving between different instructional models in response to fluctuating school-based and community metrics. Some metrics include, and I think I went over this briefly in the beginning, the number of active cases, hospitalization, seven-day averages, and the number of cases per 100,000 at both the state and county level, and then the data pertinent to local levels. What I mean by the data pertinent to local levels is how many active cases in Dairy. So we go to these, what's that called? I refer back to that COVID-19 dashboard, and sometimes it sounds like a data geek, but it really is good going to the COVID-19 dashboard and looking at all the data and synthesizing it, and then also talking about it. New Hampshire Department of Public Health and Human Services also works with our schools and our S.A.U.s to determine the public health protective measures dependent on specific situations. So next, I'm going to use a specific example to illustrate the combination of the tables that you'll see projected on the screen. So on the left-hand side of the first table, if you can show the first table, there you go. We chose the criteria of COVID-19 PCR positivity as a seven-day average. So you see that, if you can see that, on the left. So I chose today's data from Rockingham County, which is actually 1.2%. So that falls less than five. That falls in the minimal range. And you can see that? Level of community transmission, minimal range. And PCR, in case you're wondering, is the Paulie Maurice Chain Reaction. It's a laboratory technique. So now let's move to the third table, Mr. Minkel, if you can keep going down. Second table's important, but I'm going to go to the third table and show you the decision one more. One more. There you go. Okay. So moving to the third table, which I call the decision matrix, we then combine the information from the community transmission table and that of the second table, the level of school impact, which is measured by low, medium, and high. So let's assume that the student absenteeism due to illness, which is part of the second table, is at the medium level, and the level of community transmission is at the low level. So you're looking at a low level combined with a medium level, which still shows us that this decision matrix would indicate as a guide that the in-person model will still be functional, utilizing this data at this point of time based on these data points. So you're combining the low with the medium. Level of community transmission would be low, and the level of school impact would be medium. And you'd still be in that green portion, which would be in-person. And that's just a relative example. That's not necessarily where we are. If you go back to the second table, Mr. Minkel, for a minute, please, thank you, you see that there are level of school impact, and there are different criteria on that level of school impact table. One is the student absenteeism, and I referred to that as in Sue Linehan giving us that level of school absenteeism, which is really, really important at the end of every week or the last day of every week, and sometimes, certainly if we needed it, we would get it more frequently. And then the third criteria there is the staff capacity in each school, and that's really important in the ability to conduct our staff operations. And that's measured in three different levels, too, the low, medium, high, normal, strained, and critical. So really, in looking at this, and our consultant, certainly Dr. Chris Peterson, was very, very great with looking at this and analyzing this piece of, these pieces of data. Sue Linehan was great, and Dr. Matt Hydoo was great, too. And Matt and Chris were really very, very supportive of using this matrix, as well as Sue was. All of us in the leadership team were supportive of using the matrix in accordance with the other points of data that we use. And so I really wanted to take time to go over this this evening, to show you how we will be looking at moving instructional models. Again, it is not based on, as we have never done in Dairy, based on one point of data, based on multiple points of data, using our COVID-19 dashboard, using what we know from our practitioners, from our health experts, that's why it's great to have a community leaders task force team, and then using our tables here and our matrix, and then making decisions as we move forward. The importance of having a really great communication system, the New Hampshire DHHS, the Department of Health and Human Services, is, I believe, incredibly important and critical as we move forward, in addition to the day-to-day operational capacity of our schools as we continue to move forward and through this pandemic.
Any questions? Mary Ann, when you, on those slides, the one table was for school impact, does that mean each of the seven schools, or would that be a district-wide automatic decision?
The second table?
Well, just overall, when you talked about school impact, so is that, is it an individual school?
It can be individual, or it can be aggregate, right? And what has happened in other districts around is, in this, I guess I'm referring to the state document, and as you read through the state document, you can have what's called a temporary remote. You can shift temporarily to remote, too, for like a two-week time period, so that can be a temporary shift, or you can shift longer to remote. And I'm not saying this is what we're going to do, but these are situational, what I call kind of situational education, that's what I refer to it, you know, situational, some people refer to it as situational sports, and they might refer to it as situational basketball. I refer to it as situational education. And so there have been schools who've had to quickly transfer to a two-week remote, and that would be a temporary kind of situation. And so that may be by school, that may be by classroom, and so that's why I don't want to make certainly an aggregate or a comprehensive saying that it would be a school district. And that is why I believe this, the considerations document is really so pertinent and valuable to us as a district, so that we can move in and out of models and do that the right way on behalf of all students. And then the same thing as you move back in, you know, looking, if you're out on remote and you move back in, what is the best way to do that? Is the best way to do that in a hybrid model? And kind of looking ahead, we are going to meet as a leadership team and say, hmm, you know, our hybrid model is articulated as such in our plan. Is that the right hybrid model? Is that the best way to go about hybrid in the Dairy Cooperative School District now that we know what we know? We're going to meet on that next week as a leadership team and start to really examine that. What we thought we knew, I think we know more now. In fact, I know we know more now. So we're learning, and I think we're really proud, proud of the fact that, you know, we're very transparent in saying, we know a lot more than we did in June, we know a lot more than we did in July, we know a lot more than we did in August, we're better at it. So now we go back and reflect on the parts that we think we can improve on, and we move. So that's what we talked about this week on Monday at our leadership meeting, and we're ready to go and move on the plan again. So that's why we continue to make improvements, and I think our students are better for it. I know their educators are better for it, we're better for it, and our overall community is better for that, too.
I just had a quick question. First, I thought that was really interesting to understand exactly how your decision process happened, and the only question I had was whether there had been any discussion as a leadership team about, I don't know if you can do this, but encouraging people to get flu shots earlier? Because I'm thinking of the fact that if you're measuring absenteeism and how often people are out, some parents will wait to get flu shots later, some will rush and get them sooner, and obviously, we can't dictate what people do because it's not required. But I think any encouragement we could give to get those earlier would make the numbers clearer, because the flu season's coming quickly, and the more people that are protected, the less likely you have that in the picture along with some other things. So I just didn't know if that's something you guys have talked about.
We haven't. It's a really good idea. It's a great idea for the nurses, too. And the nurses had a meeting today for us, so I can't say they didn't talk about that. They already may have, they are an incredible team, our nursing team. Without them, we would be where we are, let me tell you. They are unbelievable. They're the best of the best. So they could have spoken about that, and that may go in newsletters, and that's unbeknownst to me, so. But thank you for bringing that up, and I will certainly bring that up to our nurse team leader. It's a great idea for those who are listening. I know as a staff, those clinics have already started. In fact, they started first on Monday. Kathy Kennedy arranged that.
I know those things are starting, and I think it's early.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right. We have a policy.
I just want to say I got my flu shot yesterday, thanks to the Dairy Cooperative School District bringing the nurses. And I did speak to that nurse, and I asked about, is there a need, if I'm getting it this early, to get it in another couple of months? She said, nope. And she emphasized what Erica was talking about, the sooner the better. So...
It does take your body a few weeks to build. It's full immunity with the vaccine, so plan ahead, as we always try to do, so.
So for those of you with better memories than mine, and you can look on the bottom, we talked about this, and you guys approved it in June. When we started talking about grading, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later on in this meeting, we brought out the grading system, IKA policy, as well as this one. Some people thought it was a little wordy, so we went through it again, and some of the things that, anywhere that you see educators, we took out the word teachers and put educators to include everybody, and we used the word will in a few places to emphasize what we wanted to emphasize there. And for the most part, it was mainly just wording and being a little bit more concise. I think it came out great. The entire leadership team worked on it. Every time I have to redo a policy, I want to have one of those meetings, because it is good to get a bunch of different people giving responses and so forth. But we'd like to move this forward for a first reading, if there's any questions.
Yeah, Austin, just curious, do we align this with how our high school reporting is done as well? Or is there any correlation to this? Does it carry over into that area? Is there collaboration in that regard?
We collaborate as far as when we were talking about the grading system and so forth that we used last spring, as well as what I'm going to be talking about tonight. I did talk to Derek Lee over at Pinkin' Academy last spring, as well as just a week or two ago, to give him some insight, and he filled me in on where they're at and what they're doing. For the most part on this one, this is strictly about the progress reports, which, as we know, in the middle school, they're online, and Dr. Dancy is looking into the future for our elementary to see if maybe they can be more ongoing, online, where parents can see progress as it's happening, week to week, and so forth. So that is something that he is looking into for down the road. So we communicate, if that's what you mean. Yeah.
I will say, Lynn, I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but Pinkin' does kind of follow this guideline as far as reporting progress reports, and again, the last paragraph on this policy is spot-on. If your child is not doing well or what have you, they are very good with informing us several weeks in advance before progress reports come out and letting us know that our child needs X, Y, and Z, or what have you, to catch up or what they need to do.
I appreciate that, knowing that. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, Austin.
Yep.
Any questions on the new policy? amended policy? All right. Thank you.
And we'll bring it next time for the second reading. Thank you.
Superintendent's update.
That was easier than developing the policy, Austin. Gee. Okay. All right. So welcome to the first day of fall. I am not sure where this time has gone. It has flown. But I'm so proud of all of our students, both remote and on-site, and our staff. Been a super job. And just because I talked about the considerations for moving, by the way, between transitioning between models, as we were going to, there's no plans. I just have, we just have to have a plan. So as I always say, I'm famous for saying, "I can plan, but I can't predict." So whoever's out there listening, or whoever listens later, no reason to scare you. I just had to make sure I presented that, and got that right out in front of you and made sure that the school board was aware. So as I said, I'm not sure where the time has gone. First of all, I'd like to recognize our school district teachers and staff are doing an outstanding job and working tirelessly with our students in all learning environments. Our staff really continues to do and make every day a positive experience, connecting with returning students while getting to know our newest students and families, either remotely or in person. During our phase-in opening, students have been amazing, just fantastic. With new schedules and protocols, they continue to shine, they're making excellent progress. Having the opportunity to be present in schools since August has been invigorating. It's really something to look forward to each and every day, even for brief visits. Don't go past that classroom threshold, though. That's a no-go with me. I'll step right on the threshold, but not go past. Otherwise, you sign in. During the visits, I listen to students' questions and discussions. As I've said before, I witness collaboration, and I'm proud to watch our students and adults engaged in their healthy hand-washing practices, hand-sanitizing, social distancing, and mask wearing, and just overall, just great educational practices and engagement. I've also had the opportunity to be part of a remote teacher-staff meeting at both elementary and middle school. This was a great, great way to connect with our educators who are in the remote setting, and I really look forward to the next one, for being part of that. It was just a super way to end one of my days last week. So thank you for letting me be part of that, and as I said, I look forward to the next one. It's really important for me to take time to express my gratitude for being able to celebrate each school day as it passes, and I think with this year, it's more important than ever, and really, a great reflection tool is to say, every day is one to be able to celebrate, and I think each of us takes time to really reflect on that, and it's important for all of us to do and to think about. Everyone involved, from our teachers, administrators, and all staff, to students, families, our school board members, our community members, have been so supportive and collaborative, working together with heightened awareness to achieve the ultimate goal of keeping everyone as safe as possible. So we're very happy to be back, we're very, very grateful to be back, both remotely and on-site, to learn, connect, and grow together. So again, thank you to everyone. At this time, I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the owner of the Grind Rail Trail Cafe, Melanie Davis. Melanie shared her delicious drinks and snacks with our entire school district staff at the beginning of the school year, but going to each school in a mobile café truck. We are most grateful to Melanie for her kindness and generosity to our district, and certainly her treats that she served up that those days, the first week, the teachers were enduring professional development, were enjoyed by all. So thank you very much, Melanie. Similarly to other school districts, Dairy has a number of important vacancies to be filled. If you're having any trouble at all accessing the application on the school district website, please don't hesitate to call us at 432-1210, and someone will assist you in walking through the application process. We have the following vacancies at this time: custodians, food service, we have permanent substitutes, one at Cornell and one at Gilbert H. Hood. All the other permanent substitutes have been filled, but we're still looking for two more. We also have a permanent nurse substitute that we are looking to fill. We have on-call substitute teachers and on-call substitute assistants that we are looking for each and every day. We have a remote special education teacher to fill, special education assistants, cafeteria and recess monitors for three hours a day, and lunch duty recess monitors for three hours a day. So that's both at elementary. We have cafeteria and recess monitors at elementary school and middle school, we just have a lunch duty recess monitors. So all of those positions, and I realize we are competing against other school districts, yet, as you know, I have, my heart's in Dairy. So I think if you're looking at another school district and looking at Dairy, you can't really look any further than Dairy. So, and that comes from the heart. So I will expect some phone calls tomorrow morning. Thank you. I'm not finished yet, though. The five steps to expect if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19. This laminated flyer was, should have gone out to all students and staff yesterday or today. This is a free resource from the New Hampshire Department of Education. It depicts important steps to follow for those who are confirmed positive with COVID-19. Again, not to be negative in any way or pejorative in any way, but it is a free resource in the Department of Ed. I have several calls with them, and when we can order something, it's a free resource for families in the community, doesn't cost our district anything, and the commissioner offers these free resources, I do take up on those offers for free. So, and it's a very, very good, heavily laminated one, so I hope that your child brought one home, and if they aren't here and they're in a remote setting, you won't, we have plenty at the schools, certainly to offer anybody at home who wants one. As a reminder, there will be no school on Monday, October 12th, in celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day. This is an opportune time to remind all families of the guidance. And I do want to take time to go over this issue by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health, about traveling outside of the New England states. So I think it's really important for everyone to just be reminded of this, and we remind our staff as well, that according to the Division of Public Health, New Hampshire residents or out-of-state visitors traveling to and from areas outside of New England need to self-quarantine for the first 14 days of any intended stay in New Hampshire after travel. And that's starting from the last day of travel outside of New England. And I quote, "This recommendation is irrespective of the mode of transportation for travel, public versus private transportation. It is also acceptable for travelers to New Hampshire to self-quarantine in their home state prior to arrival, as long as they do not travel on public transportation." That's end of quote. So I remind us, you know, remind all of us, and certainly we have students coming in on-site, which I'm thrilled that we have so many students on-site, just as a reminder that long weekends coming up for Indigenous Peoples' Day and Veterans' Day and so forth, that we have that quarantine period if any family goes outside of New England. So it's just a reminder that I think needs to be given to everyone. And thank you for listening. And again, thank you to our Building a Ground Subcommittee, your maintenance department, Jane Samard, for working so hard to get us our new windows at Derry Village School. I don't know if you've seen them, but I'm like so pleased. One of our, one of our students there yesterday said that they couldn't wait to go in a new classroom. And it was really because of the new windows and that just, you know, certainly that brought joy to my heart, just to think that a student there thought they had a new classroom because of new windows. The lobby and office renovations at Gilbert H. Hood, all of the lobby renovations, Jane, for securing the home and security grants, everything looks really great. Properties look great. So I just want to thank you and certainly know everything's a continuous model of work and pride and cleaning and sanitation. And I think everyone is really doing a super job and I'm continuing to be proud to be here and be part of a great community. So thank you.
Any questions for Mary Ann?
The windows do look great. Like, they look like they've always been there. They look so, so great from the outside. I didn't go inside, but I'm sure they're really, really happy to have them. And I'm just going to also say this, as I talk to different colleagues around the state, I realize how lucky we are to be here with the staff, the teachers, the assistants, the nurses, all of you guys and the administrative team. We're doing a good job here. And despite everything and all the, all the work that's gone into it and all the worry, all the bad press sort of that we had, we're really doing a good job. So you guys really should do this because we've come a long way and we have a lot of happy people, a lot of happy children. I was fortunate enough to be at South Range last week when they were just finishing up a, a drill, you know, get out of the building drill. And it was so smooth. Everybody was, did what they were supposed to do. There was no, there were no issues at all. And so kudos to them. I just happened to be dropping something off at the school and was there at the right time or the wrong time, I guess. But then, you know, I watched the kids on the playground. They're so happy to be there. They're wearing their masks. They're doing what they're supposed to do. So, you know, kudos to our staff, but also kudos to parents who are reminding children, these are the rules that you have to follow, and, you know, we'll get through this. So I just, you know, I'm always reminded, as bad as it can be, we are really lucky to be here. So I don't really mean that as bad as it could be, but sometimes it seems bad when you're getting yelled at or whatever. But we're really lucky. So thank you.
I would agree that our families have done an amazing job. I was reading an article yesterday in a college newspaper about a couple of kids who were talking, and they were amazing in that their introspection was, you know, not any negative. It was all positive. And if, you know, they can do that, we can too. So keep up the positive.
Thank you. And we will discuss the grading system now.
Okay. School year 2020, 2021 grading system. Just so you are all aware, we had a school board curriculum instruction, learning, and assessment subcommittee meeting that we called real quickly and put it together last Wednesday just to discuss this grading system with those board members before bringing it here to the full school board. This past spring, when the district went fully remote for the remainder of the third trimester, we were thrown into a situation that tested our determination, resilience, and adaptability. One of the areas in which we were able to adapt was in our grading procedure, which moved from the letter grade system that is based on a 100-point scale to a system based on ongoing constructive feedback and evidence of individual student progress. Over the past few years, the district has moved along the path of competency-based education, which allows all students to demonstrate their progression on the path to proficiency of standards and learning targets. The creation of the new report card format this past spring was aligned with the concepts of competency-based education, and we have made improvements to that report card for the 2020-2021 school year. David Minkle will now display the elementary school and middle school student feedback and grading rubrics. There was a great deal of input from families, teachers, and other district staff, students, and members of the Return to School Task Force teams. We heard from families and teachers that this past spring, the one-letter indicator created some confusion. For example, a D typically indicates a poor grade, but the D on the spring report card indicated demonstrating. In response to the feedback, we instead are implementing two-letter indicators for each category in the Student Learning Indicator scale, so there would be no confusion with the old letter grading system. The new and improved letters are DP, demonstrating proficiency, EP, emerging progress, and LP, limited progress, for both elementary and middle. For middle school students, there is an additional category of IE, insufficient evidence. Each category starts with a description, then explains evidence of the student's progress, and finally defines the category in the words of the student. If you look down on the left-hand, down each column, that's how that is explained. Along with the student learning, David, could you show the middle school one quick, please? Same thing with the added category on the left of insufficient evidence. Along with the student learning indicator scales, there is also a student disposition scale, which David Minkle will now display. Perseverance and problem solving from this past spring were brought forward with the addition of the disposition self-motivation. In the column on the far left, each of the dispositions are defined. Then the same descriptors from the Student Learning Indicator scale are used for both elementary school and middle school, which again are LP, limited progress, EP, emerging progress, and DP, demonstrating proficiency. These dispositions, along with the grading rubrics and feedback, enable teachers to better report progress on the development of the whole child. There are also expectation and guidelines for the teachers providing the feedback during the student's progress along the path to proficiency. Throughout the trimester, teachers will provide students and families with feedback regarding the student's academic progress. This feedback may be some combination of the following: comments, holistic rubric scores, numerical grades, and/or other forms of formative and summative assessments. Teachers will track student data and a body of evidence to help inform the end of the trimester category that is earned by the student on the Student Learning Indicator scale and the Student Disposition Scale. On the report card at the end of the trimester, each classroom teacher will enter the two letters that best indicate the learning progress of the student for each subject area and the three dispositions. Teachers will also draft a comment narrative to provide some additional information about each student's progress. Along with the development of this grading system, we are working on clearly defining standards and learning targets for each grade level. These tools will help further inform the learning indicators for each student and provide greater consistency across the district. In addition, we will be providing support to help families better understand this new way of reporting student learning, including an informational video. Brenda brought this up and said something about Schoolhouse Rock. I don't know if we'll get that good with it, but we will try to make it engaging and entertaining. We are excited to build upon the momentum that began in the spring on our path toward competency-based education, and we are confident that these steps are in the right direction. Questions? Yeah. We'll give it a try. I don't know.
No questions? All right. Oh, did we have to suspend the current system? We're just going to roll this one in?
No, we didn't have to because of the way it was written.
Okay.
We checked that, though. But thank you for asking.
Thank you. All right, let's see who's next. Oh, it's Austin again. Okay.
I told you I'd be talking too much tonight. So the Derry Cooperative School District Alternative Remote Learning Plan, along with our two middle schools, five elementary schools, and Derry Early Education Program, we now have a ninth and 10th school in our district that we collectively call the Alternative Remote Academies. The elementary kindergarten through grade five school is called the Dream Academy, and the middle school, grade six through grade eight, is called Connect Academy. As of about 6:15 this evening, the number of elementary students is 394, and in the middle school, there are 289, for a total population in the Alternative Remote Academies of 683 students. You've just heard the discussion about the grading system for 2021, so I will move on to other topics related to the Alternative Remote Learning Plan. The Alternative Remote Academies, along with our regular duties, District Mathematics Director Lisa Long, District Literacy Director Dr. Sarah Taylor, and I, and now the Assistant Principals and Principals respectively of the Alternative Remote Academies. We have three remote teachers in each grade level, kindergarten through fifth grade. And in each grade level of the middle school, there is one team of four teachers, mathematics, literacy, social studies, science, and two special education teachers share the three grades. There are also four remote special education assistants, a remote speech pathologist, and a remote reading specialist. We have six teacher team leaders, which breaks down as two co-team leaders in grade six, and one team leader each in grade seven and grade eight, and one team leader each for the grade spans of kindergarten through grade two and grade through three through grade five. The remote core subjects. We are in the fourth week of the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, and at the middle of only the second full week of school. Our first priority for the Alternative Remote Learning Plan was the delivery of the core curriculum. The emphasis at the elementary levels in mathematics and literacy, with social studies and science, added in over time. We have been discussing with the elementary teachers the addition of Mystery Science and other web-based resources for both science and social studies. At the middle school level, the emphasis has been on the core subjects of mathematics, social studies, literacy, and science, and all grades have either implemented the edmentum exact path, individualized learning paths, or are now developing this resource for their students. Dramatic pause. Remote Unified Arts. We have heard from a number of concerned parents about the lack of unified arts in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan. Excuse me. We are allowing remote students to attend Unified Arts classes in person, but we do realize that some of our students just cannot be face-to-face in school. Again, the emphasis has been on the core subjects, but we have been looking into how we could provide Unified Arts remotely from the beginning. I am happy to report that thanks to the work of Dave Brown, the Elementary Unified Arts Subject Administrator, as well as the Assistant Principal at Barker, and the caring and dedicated elementary Unified Arts teachers, we will be offering recorded Unified Arts lesson for all grades, kindergarten through middle school, grade eight, in music, physical education, and art as of Monday, November 28th. It has been difficult to find solutions for middle school Unified Arts teachers, but they want to participate and will be having discussions about their involvement as early as trimester two. So speaking of trimester two, unless the district shifts to hybrid or fully remote, all students in person at our schools would be, will be expected to remain face-to-face. We have spent these first few weeks of school adjusting our enrollments for the remote academies, as well as the in-person schools. Except for a medical reason or some extenuating circumstance that will be scrutinized on a case-by-case basis, as of now, we will not be moving students who are in the buildings face-to-face into the remote learning environment. For those students currently remote, the deadline to change from remote to face-to-face instruction in the actual school buildings will be Monday, November 9th at 4:00 p.m. The first trimester will now be closing two weeks later, on Monday, November 23rd, which is that remote day that the superintendent put in prior to the Tuesday parent-teacher conferences, prior to the Thanksgiving break. When we come back from Thanksgiving break on Monday, November 30th, we will beginning, we will begin trimester two. The reason we are looking at Monday, November 9th at 4:00 p.m. for people to make those decisions is in case there's a lot of changes, we will need to look at staffing and how we're going to be prepared to make sure we have the proper staffing for face-to-face, as well as remote, come the 30th of November. So the biggest message I want to convey to all of our parents and guardians of students in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan is that all of this is a process that will continue to move forward. We listen to your requests for more live Zoom time with teachers, and our wonderful teachers in the Alternative Remote Academies are constantly looking to improve their schedules, add more exciting and engaging independent work opportunities for students, and always keep lines of communication open to you and your children. Thank you for your input and involvement in your child's education, and we will continue to improve. Questions?
Nothing? All right. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Jane has a FEMA update for us.
Okay. We've talked since we started our remote learning back in March about possible funding or reimbursement of funding through the FEMA program. And originally, it was going to be a 75-25 split. The district would have to cover 25% of any expenditures that we applied for. And those would have been for things such as PPE or supplies that we needed to either go remote or to return to the school. But recently, they have changed course and are not going to be reimbursing any district for any funds. And I would like to read the statement because it'd be really hard to paraphrase it, and I think it's important to know why they're not going to reimburse us. So this is coming from Homeland Security from New Hampshire. FEMA confirmed on Friday, September 11th, that the operation of schools, even with changes necessitated by COVID-19 environment, is not an emergency protective measure eligible for financial assistance under Public Assistance Category B because the education of children is not an immediate action necessary to protect public health. I'm sorry, to protect public health, life, and safety. As such, FEMA does not provide financial assistance for PPE, cloth facial coverings, disinfecting, physical barriers, and temperature scanning for the regular operation of schools. And they just said that this is their So, I know there are a lot of districts surrounding us and throughout the state that, you know, we made purchases upon the belief that we were going to get some reimbursement through FEMA, and so that's not going to be the case, and we will continue to use our CARES Act funds in lieu of that. Does anybody have any questions on?
Jane, can you read that line again, the education of children?
Sure.
Thank you.
It says that it's not an emergency protective measure eligible for financial assistance under Public Assistance Category B because the education of children is not an immediate action necessary to protect public health, life, and safety. It was disappointing that we would not be getting the reimbursements for, you know, a lot of the products that we purchased, obviously, to protect our children and protect our staff. But unfortunately, it is what it is, and we're just going to move forward with CARES Act. But that would have meant a lot of money for our district and others.
Do you know how much of our CARES Act funding we've used at this time?
We've, we will have used it all. We're actually still writing the grants, but we will have used it all because we've actually, I've actually been tallying it. So, so far of things we've actually paid for, we're up to about $345,000, and we still have some outstanding invoices. We just received our shipment of water dispensing systems. I think we ordered two additional ones for each school. So, there are still some bills that are coming in, but so far, we're up to $345,000, which is about the amount that we're getting through CARES. So, right now, anything over and above that is on the district, so all the additional salary, staffing, and thus such.
Thank you for that update.
Sure. You're welcome.
Jane, if once, I'm just going to say Derry because that's what I'm worried about. Once Derry has expended all the CARES Act money that is allotted to us, will FEMA kick in after that?
I don't think so. I don't think that FEMA is going to kick in. At least, our understanding of it right now is that they're not going to kick in.
Jane, aren't the only available funds Gopher funds at that point?
Right now, it's just going to be the CARES Act funds. Yep.
And I honestly haven't paid too much attention to the Gopher funds because they're, you know, they're here, and I assume that, you know, whoever's applying for them is applying for them and will hopefully get them. I kind of feel like DCYF might feel the urgency to have children in school a little different than FEMA. I might be writing some letters.
Right. I don't think any, I don't know, from my understanding of our calls with the commissioner, it didn't sound like any FEMA money was available, but once we've expended CARES Act, then the only possible money from what I heard was perhaps that Gopher funding, and I don't even know if that's available, but that's the only light at the end of the tunnel that was presented.
Right.
So, I do think we need to get to our state reps.
So, they essentially talked about monies that were sent to municipalities that you could possibly collaborate with your town to see if they had any additional funds that they haven't expended yet. But I haven't asked, but I'm assuming that the town of Derry has expended theirs or will be expending theirs since it's, since the funds are available until September or December of next year.
Are you referring to CARES Act funds or FEMA funds?
The CARES Act funds.
Okay. And in that Gopher system, there's a lot of different grants that are available, and I know that there's many different ones that are targeted for different groups, right? Not just school districts, so takes some looking into, but maybe there's some money there. But I'd say we should be writing about FEMA because that's unfair. You plan on something and a large amount of funding, and then it's just gone. What's going to happen with all the things that our state has gotten from FEMA? They're going to get billed now, you know?
Right.
Crazy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you for taking an interest in that because it's really important that we get to our legislators and state reps on that, I would think, immediately.
Yeah, I think so. It's an election year, so a little pressure might warrant something. Business administrator.
Okay. And to continue on that, I did apply for an additional $1,500 face masks, and I have not heard back yet for that. So, I know that they were, you know, I'm sure they rationed them out for however many students you have and how much you've received in the past, but right now, we have an order on there for $1,500. Right now, in the district, we're doing, you know, I have plenty of the cloth masks that they donated to us the last time, and we still have plenty of paper masks, and I know that parents are donating washable masks as well. So, I think we're good in that situation, but obviously, if we could get the additional $1,500, we don't have to worry about placing an order for them because, like I mentioned, the costs that we've expended so far to continue to try to keep everybody safe, we're only in the beginning. We're in September, so we still have a long way to go, and any financial help would be beneficial. So, I just wanted to update on that. When we just talked about the windows at Derry Village, I just wanted to make sure you knew that the, those, the long door windows have old, they're kind of like blinds on them. Those have already, we've already ordered shades for those and the new windows, so I just wanted you to know that we've taken care of that, but everything just seems to be taking forever to get anything in these days, but those are on order. The union had requested having bags of masks for each of their classrooms, so they all have that now. So, they have, I don't know, each school sort of did it differently, so I don't know if they have a combination of paper and cloth masks, but they, every classroom has an additional bag of masks so that they can hand out to students or staff if they, if they need them. And we also made bags up for the buses in case we have students that don't have masks. So, we were able to get all of those out. I also had these tags made so that at the end of the day, the teacher would put the tag on the outside of their door to say that their room needs to be cleaned, and then the custodian at the end of the day will flip it over so that the staff member, when they come in in the morning, knows that their room's been cleaned and disinfected. And I think that was important for staff members to know that their room's been done and not have to worry that whether it's been disinfected or not. So, we're trying out this system out in the schools, and hopefully, that goes well. We did have an issue with our disinfectant that we're using, the Vital Oxide. We've had a few people complain that it's, it's, looks like bleach stains on their clothes if they get on, if their kids touch the desk and it's a little wet. There is no bleach in the Vital Oxide. It's just an oxidizer, but we are, you know, obviously recommending that if anybody uses the Vital Oxide, it does need to be wiped down dry before you sit at a desk, or if the next person's going to come in, you want to make sure all of that's dry. So, we are, we have been working with our distributor on that. And I just want to talk a little bit about financials. As I mentioned, and I think it was our last meeting about the kindergarten aid, our final number of students that we are projecting is 275, which was our enrollment on September 1 or August 31st. So, I've submitted that to the state so that we can get our first adequacy payment, not adequacy, but our kindergarten aid, which for us, at 275 students who are attending now, would be $509,957.25. So, again, that's not going to come in a payment with adequacy. It will be a completely separate payment coming to the district. And I just want to talk a minute about food service. Last week, we were able to procure from the USDA Farmers to Families Food Box Program. The state was able to give out 11,000 boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables. They're about 25-pound boxes, and districts could request to have boxes for their families, and we requested 175 of those boxes. There was no income restriction on who the boxes went to, so we opened it up to the whole district, and there were some criteria. You could not use that food as part of your food service program, so we could not take those boxes and use them as part of our meals. They did have to be given out to families, and they came mostly from producers in Vermont and New England. It's from one of the actual food service companies. Abbey Group is required to give donations for the USDA, and so that's how districts were able to procure that. So, we were able to give those out actually on day one. And I also just want to talk about the free meal program. Right now, we did apply for a waiver, and it's the same, basically the same waiver that we applied for in the spring, where all students can have a school lunch and school breakfast at no charge. Now, that doesn't mean it's just for students who are eligible for free and reduced normally as low income. This is for any student in our district regardless of income. It's also for students who are homeschooled, for students who are in our remote learning program, and it's also available to their brothers and sisters. So, much like when you came in the spring and you were able to get meals, if your child attends our school and you've got a three-year-old sibling, your sibling, sibling is able to receive a free meal as well, both breakfast and lunch. So, we are encouraging our students in school to take part in that program, and we're also encouraging all of our students who are homeschooled and remote learning to contact the schools. We have an online ordering form now. We do have to track the students, which is different than we had to do in the spring. In the spring, we were able to just give out meals and reimbursed by count, but now we actually have to have documentation, the student ID, and if you are a child who's homeschooled, obviously, you're not going to have a student ID, but we are just requesting the student name and address so that we can log it and get reimbursed for those meals. We get $3.50 for every meal that we serve during this time. This only runs until December 31 or until the USDA runs out of this free meal program funds. So, we encourage anybody who wants one to start partaking, and I know that for the remote learners, we have scheduled times. If those don't work for families, if you're a student who normally goes to, say, West Runenburg, and the time at Hood works better for you or the time at South Range, you can pick up a meal at any one of our schools. And if those times don't work for you, you can contact one of the kitchen managers and arrange a time to pick up meals for your kids. So, we certainly, you know, we have the staff that's working, and we certainly want to, having 700 students remote, that's a big loss for the food service program, so we want to make sure we can reach as many students and make sure they're being fed, and particularly the ones who would normally be in our schools that are on free and reduced, we want to make sure that they still have that opportunity to eat a meal from our schools. This does not eliminate the need for families who are in need typically for free or reduced meals. We still want them to fill out the applications because if this program runs out of funds at the end of October, we want to make sure our parents are set up to transition right to the free program based on income and eligibility. So, if parents can still send in those applications, we would greatly appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Jane, is that application on our website?
Yes, it should be on, under food service, under departments, under food service, and she usually puts the application up there.
Just thinking, because some of these families wouldn't be in, if they're remote now, they may not be in their schools as much for us to give them flyers or whatever we usually do. It might be something to have like a little bag insert or something attached to the lunches with even like a Q code that they can scan that brings them right to the website to that form if they're one of those families that would, that would like to continue that service once the USDA program runs out. Just another way to get that in front of them to be able to apply.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Thank you, Derek.
Anybody have questions?
Jane, maybe we can give some out of the five steps. It's a good way to get them home as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Five-step posters, same way.
We can hand them out with the bags.
Making people come to school who don't come in for Unified Arts or to pick up other siblings. Some siblings, you know, are onsite and some are remote, some are split. That might be a good idea, you know, how to get some of our remote learners the five steps if they, you know, so desire them, just another way to keep those communications going.
Sure. Yep, we can definitely do that. Thanks.
Any questions?
And just in case somebody doesn't have a printer or the ability to print a form, they are available at the schools. So, just, you know, there's a lot, a lot of ways to get, get those forms.
Can the remote learners pick up multiple lunches at once, or do they have to do it come every day?
No, I think they can get multiple days at a time. It's, it would be easier for our program to do that, and it would be easier for the families, I think, if they could get multiple days. Yep.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Jane. Any committee reports at this time? Manifest?
I make a motion to approve the manifest in the amount of $1,624,903.53, where $1,126,474.06 is general payroll, and $498,429.47 is general expense.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Yeah, just one other thing, Mr. Chair, is that the Building and Grounds Committee, solely me, reviewed with the Director of Maintenance an alternative plan for entry to Derry Village School. A lot of congestion out there on 28, so eventually, I guess we're going to have some kind of proposal or ideas, alternatives to ease that congestion, and we'll bring that back to the board. That's about it. That was, I think, two Fridays ago, so it was after our last meeting. I have nothing else, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Delegations and individuals. We're going to have to have a raffle next time or something, and there's no one here. Other business?
I actually just need to make a correction, Tammy. When I abstained for the minutes, I only need to abstain to non-public. I was present for public. I was remote. Thank you.
Any other, other business? Seeing none, we have a next regular school board meeting is October 13, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, folks.